Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Dudley-Churton Regional School Committee. It is Wednesday, May 24th, 2023, and it's 7:00 PM, and we're at the Charlton Middle School today. Our first order is the Pledge of Allegiance. I have Colvin Blackwell and Ruby Paradise, our eighth grade students, who are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance for us. So everybody please rise. Thank you. Just want to give them a minute to sit. Before we move on, we're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you everyone. Today, we have a special, we have some special guests in our audience. We have the Charlton Middle School showcase. Can Principal Packard come and introduce his students for us?
A lot of students.
You have a lot.
Lots of people are all with you, but I'm glad to introduce what we're going to do today.
Please do.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to showcase a couple of groups in our school that just deserve the recognition to be seen here tonight. You know, one of the things I was thinking about before I came here is that, you know, schools are more than just core content classroom learning. It's about students having experiences that help develop their personal skill sets and also help them develop their pathway as they go through adolescence. And tonight, I have two individuals who have done a very, very good job of working with a lot of our students here. And I have Mr. Evan Bartlett, who's going to come up. He is our band director, as well as general music teacher, as well as Kelly Belazos, who is a science teacher slash show choir stipend individual as well for us. So I'd ask them, please, to come up. Come on up here. I know Mr. Bartlett doesn't need a mic, just like I, just like myself, so again, please.
Yeah. So I'm, Mr. Bartlett, I'm the band director. This is our jazz band. We meet after school twice a week. Just really quickly, I like to brag about them. If you've been to a concert, you've seen me do this before. Jazz band, raise your hand if this is your first year in jazz band.
Whoa. Good for you.
Furthermore, raise your hand if you are in sixth grade. This is the youngest jazz band I have ever overseen in eight years, seven years, however many years of teaching. They have done incredibly well. We just won a silver medal at our last competition. I believe, I believe that made us the highest scoring middle school jazz band in the entire competition. So, there you go. I want to, I would talk about them all day, but I would actually rather turn it over to a student who has been able to teach music in our school. So Karina, if you could please say a few words about me, okay?
Absolutely.
That's cool.
Hello, everyone. Parents, teachers, fellow teammates. If you don't know who I am, my name is Karina Palianis. I am a current eighth grader at Charlton Middle School. I currently participate in concert band and jazz band at CMS while also being a member of the Shepherd Hill Marching Band and went to percussion. In the past, I've also participated in the chorus and the show choir. I would say I'm pretty involved in the music program in the school district. But before I begin my main remarks, I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all tonight. As I said, I participate in the music program in the school district. Being part of this community, even if it has only been for four years so far, has completely changed my life. I've learned a lot of life lessons during my time at the school district's music programs the past few years. I am so, so glad to be part of these amazing programs at Charlton Middle School. Out of all the memories I have from my time at CMS, the ones that stick out the most are the ones I spent participating with things music. Whether it was Nationals with the marching band up at Shepherd Hill, or a Friday Show Choir competition, or even last week's trip to Lake Compounds, I'm never going to forget the time I spent participating in these teams. I wouldn't have met some of my closest friends, created these memories, learned as much as I have, or even be half the person I am today if it weren't for the music program. As I said before, I learned a lot of lessons while on these teams. One thing I learned is that when you sign up for something, you commit. The plain word committing has a lot of lessons on its own itself. You need work ethic. You need to practice whatever you're doing to make sure you're showing up to rehearsal at your best. You need to show up to rehearsal. Even when I was at my worst, I could rely on rehearsal to make myself feel better and for my teammates to, my spirits. I also learned a lot about confidence. I'm going to tell you a little story here. When I was in fifth grade, one of the things I first learned about was confidence. I remember it was my first time trying out for a solo while on Mirage, and I wasn't even called back because my directors couldn't hear me. I hit every note, but I was too quiet. So I learned that I needed to be confident in what I was singing so I could get better. Two years later, that confidence scored me my first solo, first and only solo in show choir. The last lesson I want to share with you that I learned during my time with the music program is perseverance. That lesson is really important in life, and there were definitely some times where I was having trouble getting a dance break or a complicated part during band. However, I learned that I can't just walk away when things get hard and that I just need to push through. I apply these lessons that I've learned in my everyday life constantly, and I cannot begin to thank everyone who has helped me get to this point in my life. All these elements of the music program have been a crucial part to my time at Charlton Middle School, and I hope for these elements to follow me up to the high school for the next four years as well and for the rest of my life. Lastly, I'm sure you're aware of the current situation with our budget. I just hope that while you think about your decision concerning that situation, you keep my words in mind. The time I've spent in the music association has been a truly remarkable experience, and I hope future students will be able to experience the same and say the same as well. Thank you.
I am going to use the microphone because I don't have as big of a voice as Mr. Bartlett. Hi, my name is Kelly Belazos. I'm currently the first time director of the Mirage Show Choir. I need this. First time director of Mirage Show Choir. This year, our students have been working twice a week, between three and six hours a week since September, to bring to you the show that you have seen yesterday, so a little snippet of what you're going to see today, and something that you may see tomorrow at our fifth and sixth grade concert. Our kids work so, so hard every single week, and that has culminated in an undefeated season for our show choir team.
But enough from me, let's hear from a student. Please welcome Casey Cluett.
What show choir means to me. Noun: A performance that combines choral singing along with choreography. That might be the definition of show choir, but that isn't what show choir means to me, to us. Show choir means so much more because it isn't just fun and musical and important. Rest assured, it is all of those things, but overall, the main, the main concern is that show choir is my second family, my second home. The people in show choir are those who I know will never judge me, nor will I judge them. They are little me's, little theater kids that I was able to watch grow, and that is more important to me than any silly dance. The people you meet in show choir are people you immediately know you have common interests with. Even if you might not get along every second of every day, the community is by far what show choir means to me. It is a surefire way of meeting people and making friends. Show choir is also very essential for my mental health. It keeps me and others from just sleeping in bed and watching Netflix. It keeps us from being lazy. It is a sport. The competitions are so incredibly fun and lighthearted, and you get to see so many more people just like you all around New England. If it weren't for me, I mean, if it weren't for show choir, I wouldn't, I wouldn't still be friends with some people. They live farther away, but I still get to see them and catch up every competition, and I'm not the only one. Not to mention, we learned sportsmanship and honesty. We don't always win, and that grounds us, and we're able to grow and learn. Growing is something I have watched firsthand and going to be more proud of, everyone. I didn't realize it before, but show choir apparently helped me grow too, just as a person. I was told the other day that I used to be very shy in show choir and around the school. Now that I said that, I remember it. I didn't notice it, but show choir led me out of my shell, and now I don't care what people think. I can talk in public, in front of people, and I can be myself in show choir. If you ever saw me, I change the instant I walk in, I, the moment I walk through the doors into the chorus room or the band room or the auditorium. I change if I know that that is where the show choir is meeting. I don't want to call it change, though. It's more like I morph back into my own skin. When I'm in school, I am, I go back to being the quiet little girl scared of the eighth graders. But when I open those doors, I am greeted with, by my community, and I instantly become more at home. I am not the only one in show choir, though. Their voices matter too. Thus, I asked my fellow show choir students, and their answers go, I asked them what show choir meant to them and what their favorite part of show choir was, and their answers are as followed. Quote, "The people, my friends, my family," unquote, by Jay. Quote, "The relationships and the confidence I gained about my voice and singing," end quote, by Kennedy. Quote, "How many friends I made," quote, Natalie. Quote, "The support and love for one another," end quote, by Vee. Quote, "Friends," end quote, by Ruby. Quote, "Makes you feel like you're important and a part of something," end quote, Daphne. Quote, "The relationships you get to have with so many, many people," end quote, Riley. Quote, "You make new friends and have fun times on the bus, singing like karaoke and just having fun," end quote, Michaela. Quote, "It helped me at my lowest," end quote, Sam. Obviously, there's a common denominator. Without show choir, I would have been lost. I never would have truly found myself. So if you ever were to meet me and ask me what my favorite part of show choir is, there's a chance I will say the music and the dancing, or the winning, or the costumes. However, nine times out of 10, I will say it's the people that I met along the way. This includes teachers, administrators, and of course, students. Thank you very much.
Both Casey and Karina, thank you very much. You know, we talk about relationships matter and those connections that matter. And for these kids, I can tell you right now, as their principal, I'm super proud of what they've accomplished and what they're yet to accomplish because these opportunities provide that platform, that roadmap for them. So again, and I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize the fine work of all the educators in our building. They do a tremendous job of opening opportunities for all of our kids. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the attention over to the man who's six foot nine, standing over there. Please bring it on, Mr. Bartlett. Enjoy the little show. Thank you, everybody. I have to give you the doctor and the showcase tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all to our students. Thank you. We'll give them a minute. I need one of those outfits. It changes three times? That's awesome. That's cool. For our audience at home, we're just going to take a minute and let the room clear. Or whoever wants to stay is welcome to stay. Mr. Earl, is the sound okay enough to go? Okay, great. All right, we're going to, we're going to keep moving on. We're moving on. All right. Let's go to the consent agenda items. Does anybody have anything that needs to be taken out of the consent agenda items? Nope? Okay. I take a motion to approve this consent agenda items. Okay. Second?
Sorry.
Jamie and then Kelly. Okay. All those in favor? And that is everyone. Great. Okay. And we'll move on to communications. Does any of our members have communications they wish to share? Nope. Okay. Okay. Our student representative report, Ms. Olivia, is not here today. It's her last meeting too, so I guess we should have, we will say, wish her good luck at graduation. So let's move on to superintendent's report.
Madam Chair in school committee, I do have a couple of items to share with you this evening. I'd like to start by publicly thanking the town of Charlton and the town of Dudley for their support at the annual town meetings, for a level services budget, and for support of the Shepherd Hill Regional High School feasibility study to this point. of the Shepherd Hill Regional High School feasibility study to this point. The students and community will embrace the foresight of the local voters at the annual town meetings to provide a level services budget. A level service, services budget will provide the promise and expectations of maintaining a well-rounded experience for Dudley-Cheltenham students. We acknowledge all voters and their right to vote. We also acknowledge that families and community members make a positive vote happen. From there, our appreciation continues with the locally elected select boards, finance committee, and finance advisory and appropriations committee. The efforts to balance the competing interests and limited dollars makes for a stressful exercise and commitment to the full community, not just the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District. As a large part of that community, though, we are thankful for open lines of communication and continued open lines of communication. With that said, there is more work to do to finalize the fiscal year 2024 level services budget. And if the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District will remain in good sta-, um, to remain in good standing with the Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant program, uh, the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District needs Dudley electorate to support, or their support, Monday, June 12th, 2023 at the ballot box. Uh, the next item I have is, it is my privilege to introduce, uh, the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District QuoVadus recipients for 2023. They're not here this evening, but I'm introducing them and I'm practicing for graduation as well. Uh, since 1961, the QuoVadus Club of Webster and Dudley has made contributions to our communities by supporting excellence in education. The QuoVadus Educator Award is presented to an educator who has demonstrated excellence in education. This person, these people are recognized by their peers as a benchmark and a beacon characterizing our most accomplished educators. Our two recipients this year are Ms. Katie Matthews from Charlton Middle School and Ms. Rebecca Patterson from Dudley Middle School. Again, as per tradition, the QuoVadus recipients will be recognized, and I'm sure in person, and honored at the class of 2023 graduation ceremony, uh, June 3rd, uh, 2023. June 4th. You can, you can show up on the 3rd and stay till the 4th.
You might have to pay twice for parking.
You may, yeah. Um, I am also pleased this evening to announce the 2023-2024 Dudley-Cheltenham Leadership Council's newly elected officers. Next-year president is Vanessa Bakloski, who is also the, um, representative for the town of Dudley Select Board. Vice president is Nicholas D'Amelio. Secretary is Lily Dirda, and treasurer is Allison Castaneda Moreno. So congratulations to them and their election. Uh, we had a great meeting this week where they presented speeches to the, to the group, um, and then they went through an election process, um, so they were elected. Uh, the next item I write to share that our assistant superintendent, Dr. Brian Ackerman, has accepted a position in another district pending school committee appointment and contract negotiations. Congratulations, Dr. Ackerman. We will hold off on a search process until the fiscal year 2024 levels services budget effort is complete. Before we say goodbye, I share with you that Dr. Ackerman was hired during COVID and was the first to complete the hiring process via Zoom. Uh, at that point, it was really, uh, unique, uh, to, to the process, but it seems to be quite the norm now, uh, to, to have lots of Zoom meetings. But I do recall that being one of the first, uh, Zoom endeavors that we did. His academic and intellectual acumen provided the right approach through COVID. Also, the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District has made huge strides in the acquisition of substantial, substantial grants to support the needed purchase and purchases and implementation of high-quality instructional materials, uh, for Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District. Furthermore, what cannot be understated is the amount of work behind the scenes that Dr. Ackerman has completed on behalf of the staff and students of the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District. We appreciate his work and commitment to the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District. We wish him well with his next endeavor. Again, thank you. I've not written in my report because it came in late this evening. I am here publicly to announce that Principal Packard has accepted a position outside of our district, so he has also, at the end of the school year, resigned from his position. Um, so I did receive that this afternoon. I don't have it in my written report, um, but I, I certainly support him and wish him well with his next chapter as well. Thank you, Principal Packard. Uh, the next item is actually item C. Uh, it's, it's the information around item C. So I just wanted to make sure that it was in a report, um, so I'll talk about it then. But what I'd like to do is take the opportunity once again, uh, to share as we continue to prepare for FY24 and the level services budget. I want to share again that, you know, we're going through this process. The administration continues to recommend a level services budget. We don't recommend a, um, anything contrary to that. We don't recommend a vote on something contrary to that this evening. Uh, we'll go through some of that with the level services budget. We did take your suggestions as a committee, but I'll share with you as a committee and the, and to the community, uh, there is no worst, best decision to be, to be made when it comes to reductions to meet a level-funded budget. There is no best-worst decision. Um, they're all bad. They're all unacceptable, and I still think that the mark and the goal is a level services budget, uh, for fiscal year, uh, 2024. And again, for you and for the community, um, we know we have your support as a school committee, um, so the question isn't with you. Um, it is with the voters, the electorate in Dudley, and we hope that we have their support, but we know concerns continue to be raised about what is listed for recommendations in a level-funded budget plan. Again, we're trying to develop that plan in the event that, um, things don't go towards a level services budget. So I, I just wanted to share that. So with item, uh, C, um, I will provide information about this, uh, last item in my superintendent's report. Okay?
Move on to public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment?
Madam Chair, are you gonna have public comment extended as well after discussion?
Um, I hadn't... We may, we may do that. Okay. Okay. Um, is there anyone, no one else for public comment at the point? Okay. Before we move on to new business, we want to take a minute. Um, this is Ms. O'Coin's la-, Mrs. O'Coin's last meeting. She has been...
Amazing.
Yes, absolutely. Um, she's been elected 12 times, which, if you could do the math, she's been on this committee for 36 years. Yeah. So, um, and we, you know, we wanted to just see, Mrs. Terry, do you want to come to the table as a recent school committee member in case you want to say anything for Mrs. O'Coin? It's up to you.
You want me to start?
No, you don't have to start, but if you want to come to the table, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. We wanted to, I want to say, Pauline, that you, you've been an inspiration as, you know, we talk a lot about public service and a calling, and, you know, to have worked in your regular job as an educator and then leave your job and come and do this for our children, um, it's amazing. And to have done it for so long.
Thank you.
That's lovely, and I can't think of a better year for you to end than a year when every child has free, a free meal.
Good.
Thank you so much.
And I have a little something to say. I've been on the committee for 36 years, and it seems like only yesterday. My goal has always been to offer our students a high-quality education and how to sustain that effort with careful range planning and prudent budget management. And also being a listener and a supporter of our dedicated employees. That goal was, was accomplished by being recognized on January 18th, 1999, in U.S. News and World Report as one of 96 outstanding American high schools, and the school was congratulated in the Senate of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And in November 2012, I received a lifetime achievement award from MASC, and I did receive a QuoVadus Award for Outstanding Educator in Webster. Even when I factored in the stressful meetings during COVID times, I have thoroughly enjoyed my opportunity to serve my community for these many years. So forgive me for being emotional. I leave with gratitude, and if I might dare to pat myself and my colleagues on the back as sense that we accomplished much, that is good in our efforts to make our school district one of the best in the Commonwealth. Please pick up the baton and carry on. One more, uh, offering. Please vote yes on June 12th for the override to fund school and town budgets. I never imagined that I would have needed town services to save my life back in September, but they were there in a matter of seconds. Thank you, and I wish the best for you all.
Um, I get a chance for any members of the committee if they'd like to have anything to say?
Pauline, I just want to say thank you for all the years that you've dedicated to the district. I was a student in the district when you were on this committee, um, and this district is the biggest reason why I sought out a house in Dudley and moved here, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would second that, Pauline. I was one of the students here when you started too, and I appreciate, um, all the hard work. Uh, it takes one heck of a person to stay that committed for that long, and, uh, we appreciate it, both communities and our students, so thank you for all the support throughout the years. Enjoy your free time.
I will.
Um, do we have any members of the audience that want to come up and say anything? Sure. And this is not regular public comment, Jamie.
Thank you. It doesn't count against my three minutes?
Perfect. Doesn't count.
Mrs. O'Coin, I just wanted to say thank you, like everybody else has, um, but I also wanted to say thank you for the mentorship that you provided to me as a new member coming on and spending five years, uh, sitting at the table next to you. Uh, I feel like you, your guidance, your direction, your experience really helped to, uh, make it an easier transition. I know we faced very difficult times, uh, through COVID, um, together, and I appreciate that we were sitting next to each other.
Thank you. I will miss everyone.
Yes. You can come back and sit next to me in the audience.
Through the chair. Uh, Pauline, we go way back. There was like a 25-year gap in there somewhere, but yes, we go way back. I was not in school when you started school committee. A little bit older than that, but, uh, Pauline, I really appreciate especially your, uh, historical knowledge of Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District. You know, the ins and outs, the, the understanding, the, uh, you know, politics part of it, as well as the people. Um, you have certainly, um, made quite a difference for a lot of people, and, um, never mind the students, but also the teachers, educators, um, community members, and, um, I know they'll be thankful for years to come, so just wanted to thank you, Pauline, for everything you've done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So at this time, we have a card for Pauline, and we also have a hanging plant, and we brought in a cake. So we're gonna take a five-minute, um, recess and, and have a little bit of cheer for Pauline, and then we will get back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Sam.
All right, we are back, and thank you, everyone, for your time and patience. We're going to move on to new business. We have, A, the update of the Director of Pupil Personnel Search.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. The Committee to Find the Next Director of Pupil Services was formed in early May, and we reviewed eight applicants for the position. I want to first thank all members of the Dudley Charlton Regional School District staff that volunteered to serve on the committee. Our team met and identified four candidates for a first-round interview on Thursday, May 11th, and then from there advanced two finalist candidates for a second interview on Tuesday, May 16th. This was followed by forwarding the names of the finalists to Superintendent Lamarche for consideration. Each finalist candidate will meet with Superintendent Lamarche later this week, and then the superintendent will provide a recommendation to the school committee for appointment. I'd like to first provide a little background on each finalist candidate, Ms. Heather Harriman and Ms. Jennifer Toth. Heather Harriman is currently the Special Education Coordinator at Charlton Middle School. Ms. Harriman came to the Dudley Charlton Regional School District in October of 2020. Previous to this, Ms. Harriman was a Special Education Team Chair in Oxford Public Schools for five years, and she has 17 years of special education teaching experience, most of which is in the Oxford Public Schools. Ms. Harriman holds both a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from Westfield State College. Jennifer Toth is currently the Director of Pupil Services in Harvard, Massachusetts, a position she has held since July of 2022. Previous to this, Ms. Toth was an educational advocate and consultant, starting in 2016, and running to her directorship in Harvard. Ms. Toth also served as a middle school principal, first in Lester and later in Northbridge. Ms. Toth holds a bachelor's degree from UMass Amherst and a master's degree from Worcester State College. The committee would like to publicly thank Ms. Harriman and Ms. Toth for taking time to engage in a great interview process with the team. I would also like to thank members of the interview team for your commitment, dedication, and outstanding conversation throughout the process. You represent the best of the Dudley Charlton Regional School District, and we appreciate all that you have done. The team members are Ms. Jean Costello from the school committee, Ms. Caitlin Panzik from the school committee, Mr. Kenny LaFaria from CPAC, Ms. Tammy Martin Allison, Special Education Coordinator, Ms. Amy Jettie, Special Education Teacher, Ms. Shannon Sullivan, Special Education Teacher, Ms. Amanda Jeringi, Special Education Teacher, and Ms. Christine Savoy, paraprofessional and president of the DCPA, Ms. Sarah Rowe, a parent, and myself as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all so much for volunteering your time on that committee. And we'll move on to the update of the Charlton Elementary School Principal Search. Mrs. Desto.
Thank you, and thanks again, Mrs. Okoye. I do want to say, don't think you're getting off the hook that easy. I'm bringing my pups to your house from now on. So, the, there was a search committee formed for the next principal of Charlton Elementary School, and I have to say, the committee that has came together and became part of this very dedicated group to find the right fit for this school was outstanding, and I really felt that we meshed well together, and everybody had the same goal in mind. I would like to publicly thank the individuals for joining this committee and dedicating their hours of time to do so, because we did spend time. It was Mrs. Kelly Zella from school committee, Mr. Peter Olson from the Principal of Heritage School, Mrs. Susan Pucci, the Special Ed Teacher at Charlton Elementary School, Mrs. Amy Kerewak, the Reading Specialist of Charlton Elementary School, Mrs. Chelsea Valley, a kindergarten teacher at Charlton Elementary School, Mrs. Eve DePietro, the Board Certified Behavior Specialist for the district, Mrs. Stephanie Duzwa? Is that how I say it? Duzwa? She's a parent at Charlton Elementary School, and Mrs. Carrie Anne Palatier, also a parent of Charlton Elementary School. We did have to make some unique ways for people to attend and join into the interview process, and again, we spent a lot of great time talking over each individual as we had them. There was a total of 16 applications submitted with six candidates that were finally chosen to interview. Of those six candidates, one person withdrew, so we brought five people to the table. We started our interviews on May 11th, and we ended them on May 18th. After the last interview on May 18th, we spent some time talking about each candidate that we interviewed and had pros and cons of each way. At the end of that meeting, we all came to the agreement in a unanimous sense that there were two individuals we wanted to bring forward to Mr. Lamarche for consideration. The two finalist candidates were Mrs. Laura Ramos and Mrs. Carolyn Robbins. Mrs. Ramos is currently the Assistant Principal of Leroy Mayo Elementary School in Holden. She has worked with students and families for more than 19 years in the capacity of an ABA, Applied Behavior Analysis Therapist, a Special Education Teacher, and an Assistant Principal. She shared that she's ready for the next step in her career and feels that Charlton Elementary School is the home for her. She holds a bachelor's degree from Becker College and a master's degree from American International College. We also are, would like to recommend Mrs. Robbins, Carolyn Robbins, who is currently returning from maternity leave after having her daughter this past year. Mrs. Robbins has 12 years' experience working as an Assistant Principal and Principal. Prior to her maternity leave, Mrs. Robbins was the principal of Anne Ware Jackson School in Plainville, Mass. She shared that she is a graduate of Shepherd Hill Regional High School and feels that she can bring her talents and experiences to Charlton Elementary School. She holds a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from the University of Massachusetts. Again, we thank everybody for their time, their energy, their efforts, and everything that it took to kind of come to the agreement and to bring two people to Mr. Lamarche.
Bless you.
Yes. As a point of clarity, did you say Mr. Starcheski? Because he's on the team too to find a Director of Pupil Personnel Service.
You know, sorry about that, Chris. My apologies, and thank you for the catch, Jamie. Principal Starcheski was an integral part of our team, so my apologies for the oversight.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the update of the fiscal year 2024, and we'll review the annual town meetings.
Madam Chair, I just.
That was placed on the agenda, I believe, for the school committee if they wanted to give any feedback on their annual town meetings that occurred over the past two weeks from the last time we met. I'm not sure.
Do we have anyone from Charlton that would like to discuss the annual town meeting?
It wasn't really a lot to discuss, unfortunately. It was pretty, like, they attended, but the feasibility study did pass as well as the budget, so as far as Charlton goes, I think we got what we thought we were going to get for approvals there.
Do we have anyone from Dudley that would like to discuss the Dudley Town Meeting?
I can give a little bit. It was a pretty, it was a good meeting, and I think that we, it was very, it was well-attended, much more than I've seen in years, and that was great. A lot of different voices were heard, which was good, and we did get support of the, both the contingent budget as well as the reduced budget if needed, if the override doesn't pass, and then they supported the feasibility study going into the, into the vote as well. So, that was good.
If anybody has anything, do you have anything to add, Pauline or Caitlin? Yes, please.
So, in the last eight years, when we reached this meeting after both town meetings have occurred, we've had a budget in place, and really, the only question mark are, question marks are what the revenues are going to look like. Sometimes we'll have a definitive Senate budget this year. We still don't have that. I don't remember that we had a consensus budget from the Governor, House, and Senate in my time here, and obviously, in 2020, you know, for fiscal '21 during COVID, it was a big question mark for six months, you know, through December. This year, obviously, everybody understands where we're at. We certainly have the hopes of having an approved budget, but we still are contingent upon the June 12th vote, vote, and the potential override in Dudley. So, it is a very unique year. We'll obviously cover contingencies and, you know, our plan for going forward in the next agenda item, but, you know, it truly is a year unlike others, and finding the right solution here isn't a matter of support from the elected boards or appointed committees in either town or from this board. It really is in the hands of the voters.
Thank you. We'll move on to the update of the level-funded budget plan.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to talk about Item C first, so that maybe doesn't become part of the conversation B, you know, meaning that we answer those questions in case somebody's talking about a special district-wide meeting and what that looks like, so I'd like to talk about that first and just present to the committee. So, in my report, as I shared with you, this is regarding a special district-wide meeting. Sometimes people call it a supertown meeting. Mr. Matthew and myself have been doing an incredible amount of research to try to understand this, because Dudley Charlton hasn't visited this, I believe, since 2005. I believe that was the last time there may have been a, either a consideration or a district-wide special town meeting, a special district-wide meeting. So, keep in mind that this information that I'm providing in this report does not substitute a full interpretation of the Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B, Budgets, Apportionments of Expenses. This only is a, my brief notes on it and some of the work we've done. We have contacted DESI, we've contacted MARS, we've contacted Jim Cosgrove. I've reached out to other regional district superintendents who have experienced special district-wide meetings, so we are continuing that research, but please keep in mind that if there is a favorable vote on June 12th, this is all moot, but we do have to continue to do our work in preparation for what this might be for you as a committee, and so we're trying to present to you with as much information to get you up to speed as to what this would actually be for a special district-wide meeting. So, what I tried to do is I really tried to incorporate some of the important timelines that are involved in looking at a special district-wide meeting. So, the first is, and this is if there is not a favorable vote on June 12th for a level services budget, then the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee has 30 days to reconsider and amend and resubmit by vote an FY '24 budget to the town of Dudley. So, again, on June 12th, this is why we're recommending that we do, we're recommending administratively to you as a committee not to make any changes to the level services budget that you've already voted at this time. If June 12th is unsuccessful again, you have 30 days to reconsider, which means you can resubmit, consider it, you heard the electorate, reconsider it, you can amend it, but then you have to resubmit it to the town of Dudley. After, within those 30 days after you resubmit it, Dudley Charlton Regional School District must submit the reconsidered amended FY '24 budget to the town of Dudley no later than seven days after your vote as a school committee. Prior to the expiration of 45 days, meaning the town has 45 days from the date of the school committee reconsidered amended FY '24 budget vote, the town of Dudley shall hold a meeting of the local appropriating authority to act upon, to reconsider, amend FY '24 Dudley Charlton Regional School District budget, meaning have another town meeting. Okay? They have 45 days to have another town meeting. The caveat in there is if the town does not hold another town meeting within the 45 days after the school committee submitted their reconsidered amended budget, the budget is considered to have been voted and appropriated, it is considered to be certified. So, the town would have to hold a town meeting within the 45 days, otherwise it's sort of by default the budget comes into play. At that point, if the local appropriating authority, town meeting, fails to support the reconsidered amended FY '24 budget, the Dudley Charlton Regional School District School Committee, via two-thirds vote, can convene a special district-wide meeting open to all registered voters in both municipalities at which the reconsidered amended FY '24 budget can be considered. So, again, to go over some timelines to reiterate them, 30 days from June 12th, seven days after that, 45 days for the town for another town meeting, and then if the town meeting, the next town meeting does not support the appropriation, then the district can move towards a, excuse me, a special district-wide meeting. Such a meeting shall be called pursuant to a warrant, and it has to have 14 days' notice for the municipalities. So, again, this is not, this is more of a 101 on this and what it looks like, but I wanted to really present this to the committee, because I know it's come up in a couple of conversations as well as a couple of meetings. I just wanted to make sure you were up to speed on what calling a special district-wide meeting looks like. Okay?
Does anyone have any questions?
I do, but I think I have to make it as a motion to pick a date for this, should this, should the.
We can't do a date for a special meeting at this point, so what would happen is?
Well, we know when it's going to fail, so we know the timeline. We're not able to.
We don't know that it's going to fail.
Well, we know when it's revoted, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, agreed. We don't know that, but we know that if it does, we know the date of that, so we would know the timeline.
If it does, our meeting is on June 14th, so at June 14th, we can take a vote on, like, we can put that on our ballot, like, on our agenda.
You can reconsider, amend, or, and then revote the FY '24 budget.
Okay. And if we do that at the June 14th meeting, that sets the seven days.
Seven days to inform the towns.
Yeah.
And then 45 days, which includes the seven days. I don't know if I wrote that in there.
Okay.
45 days, which includes the seven days.
So, we have to, they have to have a town meeting first, and if that doesn't go through, then we have to, then you can, by a two-thirds vote, choose to go to a supertown meeting. Is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
Gotcha, okay. I was just trying to figure out if it was worth it to put a date out there, just.
I think it's premature.
Okay, fair enough. Yes, let's hope that we don't even need it.
Right, but we need to be, we need to be educated, we need to be educated on what it looks like in the timelines, yes.
Okay.
The only other thing that I want to add to this, which isn't in this report, is this moves us to a 112 budget by the state, which we'd have to work with the state on what a 112 budget is. What I'm hearing from my peers and colleagues is there is a lot of angst regarding a 112 budget, not only for you as a district, but for the communities and for your staff, and it is, it can be very complicated and overwhelming work, overwhelming work for the district, just to be clear. Okay? All right?
Do we have, does the committee have any questions? Yes, go ahead. Could you explain a 112?
A 112 budget is where the state takes over our budget for, until we get a budget passed by the communities, and they provide us, they, my understanding is they provide us enough funding to kind of limp towards a budget, and it's usually based off of the prior fiscal year.
Does anybody in our audience have any questions? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Jamie.
So, with all of these timelines and with a limp to the next budget. So with all of these timelines and with a limp to the next budget, I mean, that, this really puts us at the beginning of the next school year.
Yes.
Yes.
And it just complicates things with the, you know, staff that have already been notified. It's just-
It does.
Yeah?
Yep.
Jamie, do you have a question? Do you want, can you come up, please, so we get it?
It's just a third question.
Okay.
Sharon, what?
What happens to the staff that are currently under the possibility of cut in the meantime? Are they still staff members until we have the budget resolved?
That's a good question.
Madam Chair, no. We have to continue to work, timelines are not on our, on our side, so we have to continue to notify people formally until we have a budget in place.
I think, that doesn't answer my question. I think the question, like-
They're in limbo until we have a level services budget voted by the town of Dudley.
Do they get paid?
So therefore-
Do they get paid?
Therefore, there will be layoff notices coming until we have a level services budget.
So we, when, if the vote is a negative, then we have to go with the, our level-funded budget until such a time as it becomes level service? Is that-
No, you're talking about two different, almost two different things here.
Right.
We don't have a budget for FY24 yet, so until we do, we have to be prepared for a level-funded budget.
And yet that-
Right, so that means those people that we were informing will receive formal notification. Obviously, if the budget comes through, they'll be recalled, they'll be, they'll be brought back in, but we have to go through the, we can't carry somebody if we don't, if we have a level-funded budget.
So on July 1st, are they no longer employed?
Correct.
Correct.
So, so our cuts would already have been in effect?
Correct.
Even though our budget could still come through?
If the budget comes through on June 12th, and again, the recall process is very quick. But we have to be prepared for not having that and getting into a 112 budget, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So in other words, if we go into September and we're on that 112, taking it month by month, these people are laid off? They're not coming back in September?
Correct.
Until such time as the, it passes at the meeting.
Until such time as you pass a budget to afford.
That's what, no, I'm just, um-
Right.
But, uh, they will come back if we pass that budget. Those same people, they're not going to-
Not if we pass that budget.
You're not going to cut some of them still. They'll all come back.
We, as a matter of planning and a matter of preparation for a not-level services budget on June 12th, we have to provide notices to individuals. We can't wait and carry and keep waiting until the next meeting and the next meeting. We have to provide them notice so that they have an opportunity to go out and get another job, number one, but number two, we don't have the finances to carry them if we don't have a level services budget.
Yeah, I understand that, but once we get the level service budget, say we went to a district-wide meeting and that, those people that were cut, are they going to come back or are you going to still keep some without position?
Our goal is to restore everything that we're talking about in a level services budget.
Okay, I just want to-
That's always, that's, that's-
Because they'll be nervous, they might, they may have jobs, but they may not.
This has been very disruptive for our staff, very disruptive.
It will, for the students and everyone.
And it will continue to be, it will continue to be disruptive to our staff until June 12th.
Yeah.
Or even after June 12th.
After that. It's not resolved by when the kids come back in the fall.
No. Did you have a question still? You looked like you had one.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Jean, have a question?
Jean.
I missed that. Thank you, Jean.
I know. I can, I can try to be patient. No, just for clarification, so two-thirds, that's five out of seven members, need to say, that we'd vote for, for that to happen. Okay. Just want to be clear.
And is it two-thirds the membership or two-thirds the people who are at the table?
No, I'm just saying, two-thirds of the school committee have to approve to move forward.
That's what I mean, it's two-thirds of-
Oh, then you're talking about the-
I don't have the detailed Robert's rules, but I believe it's two-thirds of the, who's at the meeting.
Yeah, I think it's two-thirds of who's at the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, no vacations, anyone. But we won't need this, because it's going to-
So we shall require the approval of two-thirds of the local appropriate and authority, yeah.
Okay. We'll make sure, if we have to come to that, we'll make sure we get the, the legal on it.
I actually do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, it's not like a voting day, it's like a town meeting, correct? Like, you have to be there at like 7 o'clock and that's when a vote takes place, not through, you have the course of the day to go in and vote, right? It's not like a special election.
Correct. It's a, it's a, it's a town, it's a district-wide town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and we'd have it, we'd have to have many rooms and it'd be, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
It's district-wide with both communities in one meeting, one meeting, yep, and one moderator.
I've been through it once, once-
I believe it was 2005.
In the history of the Dudley Charlton, we had it once, and we had it in the gym at Shepherd Hill Regional High School, and there were over 1,000 citizens there. It's Dudley Charlton together.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we won't have to come to that. Right? Okay. So, let's move on to, would you like to do the-
Yes.
Okay.
So, we updated this, the level-funded budget plan. Again, there is no recommendation from us, but, you know, the school committee can take whatever action they see, but this is an update to what we had last time. This slide is the same slide we had before. This is the same slide. Again, I want to point out again, we're still using the most favorable numbers from the state that we have at this point in time. That's the House budget. As Mr. Matthew mentioned, the Senate has not cleared their budget, has not actually submitted a budget for us to be able to review and calculate with. The governor's budget was certainly not as healthy as the House budget for schools and for a regional school, especially a whole harmless, harmless district like ourselves, so we continue to use that. If there is a variance or a difference even after June 12th, as we do annually, we, as a district, will have to manage that financially, but we are still using the most favorable numbers for our budget to get into a level services budget. So what that means is we did ask for an operational override of $994,283. This number was, this assessment to Dudley is lower than the original one, because the original one had the governor's numbers. The number, again, we're using the most favorable numbers, the House numbers, and that's why the, the value changed from the original request in the override on April 25th to the now operational override request, because the assessment went down for the town of Dudley, according to the House budget. We've covered, again, the operational override. You know, this is, if Dudley electorate does not support the override, it is a substantial reduction for the entire district, because for every dollar that goes down in Dudley or does not get supported in Dudley, the same thing happens in Charlton, because we are a two-town regional district. Once again, I define what a level services budget is. A level services budget is really taking our student experiences now and student supports. Obviously, we make some adjustments, but we are able to absorb the overwhelming majority of our fixed cost increases of $3.6 million, but there are obviously still changes within our programming, but we do everything we can to manage in a level services budget by absorbing those fixed costs increases for FY24. A level-funded budget means that we have nominal and minimal budget increase in totality, which means we have to figure out a way to pay for the $3.6 million in fixed costs, which is why we're bringing forward a $2 million reduction, because we can't find a way to absorb $3.6 million in our budget without substantial reductions to the FY24 budget. Level-funded budget, we've talked about this since the beginning of February. It will fundamentally change the student experience. It will establish a clear movement to compliance and regulatory, what's regulatory required. It will impact support, support systems around our students, things outside of the core classroom, and we will certainly fatigue excess and deficiency, which will compound itself in FY25, meaning the ask that we're looking for now. If it is not supported, we will, we will have to ask for more, because we use that as an offset every year in our budget. Keep in mind, we've been talking about what a level-funded budget would do and how it would impact us for all these dates and times. Our level-funded budget plan target is 1.976785, but we had to add an Yale teacher, as you recall, so it's really over $2 million. So to balance our budget, we need to reduce over $2 million. Again, it's an imperfect plan. Every one of these things is unacceptable. It is, it has, as I said, to our district, it has completely put us in a position of unrest, conflict amongst adults and people and areas and departments and interests and special interests. There's misunderstandings that continue to fill the social media airways, but the plain fact is that we have to reduce our budget by over $2 million in finding that, in balancing that, and trying to figure it out in a, in a district that already has almost limited, almost limited to no resources. You know, I don't, I haven't said it in a while, but our supply accounts have been level-funded since the day I've arrived. We have not increased our supply accounts since the day I came as superintendent. So that, those, they aren't increasing annually to provide the overall resources. And once again, I want to continue to compliment Dr. Ackerman for bringing over a million dollars in grants to bring in high-quality instructional materials, because we certainly couldn't fund it out of our operating budget. Our approach was to do as much reduction as possible without eliminating. Of course, we, it's, it's almost impossible. It's an imperfect plan. So there, there are some pieces in there that may have been eliminated. And again, the results will be unacceptable to everybody. Nobody should feel comfortable with this. Nobody should accept this. And I just want to reiterate, you know, sometimes when we do these budget reductions, we look at budgets, we want to measure it by the exact dollar. So if we say that we're targeting 2.2 million, $1, and if we somehow present to you that we have, we've identified $2 million, $2, it's not as if we're not thinking about that extra dollar, because we have yet to calculate out all of the unemployment and other insurance and complexities of laying off people and what that would be like. That could be a low of $400,000 and an increase of $600,000 to our reduction, which means we have to inevitably go deeper than what we're presenting. We'd have to go deeper than what we're actually presenting to balance the budget, because it's very hard to calculate that until you actually go through the process of laying individuals off. Again, the next slides represent all schools and all departments. We're using the most favorable numbers we have out of the House at this point in time. It does not calculate in the $400,000 to $600,000 in unemployment insurance that may be, may be needed and other costs associated with that, so we have more work to do as we get deeper into the details. So based off of the feedback we received last time we met, we heard that loud and clear that kindergarten is a no-go, so we've had to identify other items for reduction in our budget, which you will see through these slides. Again, none of them are acceptable, none. So basically, at the elementary schools, which are very limited already, all we did was simply remove those reductions and lowered their contribution to the $2 million reduction to our district. So you'll see Mason Road, we've added back a kindergarten teacher and a paraprofessional. Charlton Elementary School, the same, but nothing else has changed, because, again, we need to reach that $2 million reduction. Heritage, there was no change in their identified reductions. Dudley Elementary School, there were no changes in their identified reductions. So for Dudley Middle School, there was the addition of a custodian for Dudley Middle School. Again, this is us working as a team to try to come up with, how do we meet the $2 million reduction? How do we add back kindergarten? At Charlton Middle School, there was no change in the reductions. At Shepherd Hill, there's recommendation was for the .5, which we fund .5 of this, the school resource officer, at $29,000. If you recall, when the Dudley police were looking at reductions in their department, they were, they had the school resource officer on their list of reductions as well. The district office, we heard loud and clear, don't fill the assistant superintendent's position. So what we are recommending, because there are, there is a lot of grants management moving forward, we are recommending a reduction of $100,000 from that position, not filling the assistant superintendent's position, not filling a director's position, and looking for a .8 FTE grants management data clerk, which we cut a data clerk out of our office last year, and I think what gets missed is the data clerk actually provides the right data to the state so that we can get the funding that we need. So we desperately need someone to manage data in our office, but we also need someone to do the administrative work of the assistant superintendent around the grants management and completing the grants. So that reduction went from, I think, $30,000, $20,000 last time, to $100,000 to help reach the $2 million reduction. So once again, these are all the reductions. So we previously had $2,118,674. With these recommendations, we're at $2,976,74. That doesn't include benefits, unemployment benefits, et cetera. This is how all the schools are represented to reach the $2,976,74. At Dudley Elementary School, a reduction of $101,000. Mason Road, a reduction of $188,259, which is an unfilled position, which is why it's higher than Charlton Elementary School. Dudley Elementary School, $107. Heritage Elementary School, $122,000. Charlton Middle School, $292,000. Dudley Middle School, $341,000. Shepherd Hill Regional High School, $707,000. Again, if you, you have to understand, that's going to change the student experience at Shepherd Hill. In district office, $237,500, which is going to change certainly the, the output of the district office. So a total of $2,976,74 for reduction is the new presented, administrative-presented budget reduction plan. Again, it's a difference of 40, 45,000. We were looking at the minimum of 2, 2,51, which doesn't include unemployment in it. We're able to bump it up to $2,97. That's $45,000 to go towards the possibility of $400,000 in, in unemployment benefits. Other areas, again, respectfully, this has been imperfect. It continues to be imperfect. This is not an easy conversation with anyone. We, the only thing changed on this slide is we took off anything to deal with kindergarten in accordance with the school committee. And the next thing is the Dudley override ballot vote on Monday, June 12th, and that's the end of the new budget, level-funded budget plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Sure.
This form that has a class sizes, part of this?
No, we provided that, we're, again, we're trying to catch up with information. If the school committee said, and we, we asked this question with principals too, who's ready to increase class sizes? It's nobody, but we wanted to provide you with information as to what increased class sizes might look like in the event that you say-
But this budget and slide doesn't-
We need to say reading, increased class sizes at-
Okay.
Grade six, seven, and eight here, you know?
Okay, so this is just hypothetical.
That's just informational purposes. It's not, it wasn't presented, it's not part of the level-funded budget plan.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah?
And I apologize, because I'm a little flustered, because I feel like I got caught off guard with the notification of Mr. Packard, which I don't really think was appropriate at this time, something I would have liked to have heard about in the privacy of my home or from himself, but we're going to move on with this, but I, again, I feel a little flustered about some of my comments. So, first of all, I think we had discussed from day one that pre-K wasn't really an option for us. We had all said it loud and clear, and it still made it this far, which I feel like was a step that we didn't need to really take.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, sorry, not pre-K. Kindergarten, half-day, because we said this right from the start, and it still is here. But I'm glad that we're finding a way to make that work, because as an educator, I don't feel like that's the right move for these, these kids. But I was also kind of looking at it, and it's my understanding that we have a long-term music sub in our, one of our middle schools, so I'd kind of like to make a motion to perhaps split that position between, or rather than hire a new person and let go of our health teacher, keep on the health and possibly split both the health and the music between the Dudley and Charlton middle schools, if that makes sense, so that we're not losing any, well, we're not losing a health teacher, who, by the way, these adolescents clearly adore, has done a great job over many, many years, like lots of people in our district, which would allow that, that teacher and that subject to stay. So my motion is to, to keep the health teacher position at the middle school and rather than hire to replace our long-term sub and pay those unemployment costs to the teacher we would have to let go, to split the music and the health between the two schools.
So you want to make a motion to-
If you can make that simpler.
Recommend to the administration.
Correct. Correct.
To...
Okay.
Do just that, if you can make it nicer, I'm sorry, you know, know how to go about that, but... That's okay, is there a second?
It's just an idea.
Do you need a motion to recommend?
I think we should, I think we should at least have the committee...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, recommend a motion. I don't know the right wording for any of this, I'm pretty new to this.
No, 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 that's all right, I think it's good for us to have, I think it's good for Superintendent Lamarche to have direction.
Agreed.
And for the committee to have the voice in the direction. If you, if you want to change something on here, let's vote it.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table, yeah?
Madam Chair, as I've recommended since February, I would only respectfully ask what the alternate is of that. So you're saying that you would reduce the music teacher to support a health teacher? It sounded like you said you recommended part-time here or part-time there?
Well, as a, a long-term sub position, I guess, I guess we would have to eliminate that position, so that would make sadly a cut to our music department at the middle school level, which I don't believe unless it was changed, which I don't think it was, that there were none, unfortunately. And I don't want to do any of this, but yes, I'm asking to...
But you're asking to split...
To split the time between who we currently have in a position with who we currently have in our health role position.
So you want to take, to have one health teacher and one music teacher and split them, their time between the two middle schools?
Agreed, rather than letting go of a health teacher and hiring a music teacher. Correct.
All right. But doesn't Dudley Middle have at least two health teachers?
And this is removing one health teacher?
Okay, so hold on, let's, let's get...
I'm sorry, I just like trying to...
No, no, that's okay, let's, is there a second to the motion?
One second.
Okay, so now for discussion, you can start discussion, and then we'll, we'll go into that, go ahead.
Sorry. Madam Chair.
Let's have her start discussion first. Go ahead.
So I guess for discussion, I'm hoping to keep the health position at the middle school level and not hire a music teacher at the middle school level, because that's essentially what we'd be doing if we have a long-term sub. Obviously, we'd need to be going through the hiring process for a music teacher to kind of split them both amongst the two schools, so that we're not paying out unemployment for a, for a health teacher, and we don't need to find somebody, because I believe Dudley already has a middle school teacher that possibly could be shared, I guess.
Okay, why don't we let...
However that is, I don't know.
Through the chair, I just want to be clear, this is to develop a plan, this is not actual action at this time. This is if we are a level-funded budget. You're evolving the plan for a level-funded budget.
Correct.
My concern being, I guess, is that because they, we won't know until the summer, or potentially June 12th at the very least, if we have to continue to go further, then, you know, we lose the opportunity to hire back some of the same people that we have right now.
But through the chair, I'm sorry if I have not said this, and I apologize, I sincerely apologize for not saying this, every open position is at risk, period. Again, I've talked about a $400,000 to $600,000 nugget for unemployment. So any open position right now is still at risk for not being filled. First of all, that's the Dudley-Charlton way. When there are open positions, we don't fill them, when people retire, we don't fill them. So every open position right at the end of this school year is in play until we know where we are with budget. Again, that's what I mean by trying to tie out every nickel for every dollar, it's, it's very difficult to do that with not understanding the entire nugget of unemployment insurance for us as a district. So open positions are at play through the budget process. But I only say that as a caveat, because I, I certainly respect and appreciate you helping us evolve the, the level-funded budget plan if we need to. And so what I'm hearing is, and so that, what that means is that's a reduction in music in both buildings, just to be clear.
A reduction, not an elimination, correct?
Yes, if you eliminate one position and, and recommend to share positions between Dudley and Charlton, that's a reduction of music in both buildings.
Fair, yes.
Yeah, I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Go ahead. I think Jean had something...
No.
Okay, go ahead.
So, understanding that unfilled positions are...
At risk, always at risk.
Are at risk, however, right now, not knowing that we had the long-term sub for music, that is not on this slide. So if it's not filled, shouldn't it be on this slide? Because that's another X amount that we don't need to account for.
When I talk about unfilled positions are at risk, that's from a management, global, district-wide perspective. We took what the principals offered, so if Principal Packard wants to come up and explain why he didn't put that position on here, he's certainly welcome to do that.
I'd like to...
Why don't we, could we have Principal Starcheski come up too? Because I just feel like if we're going to start talking about impacts to both their buildings, they should both have an equal seat at the table. Thank you both for coming up.
You're welcome.
It's our pleasure. All right, Principal Starcheski and I have had multiple conversations about what would be fair and equitable when we're looking at making cuts to get to the number that we need to get to in order to meet the need of our district. Our, our discussion publicly, publicly amongst ourselves administratively was to take slices of different, different areas to be able to have an equitable, equitable approach to what it would look like if we had to make those cuts. Now, at the end of the day, we do have two music teachers in both buildings at this point in time, and we had two health teachers. So in order to get where we needed to get, we had to find areas that would allow us to be able to segment a portion of what the offerings are for the students. And that's why we decided upon what we did at Charlton Middle School, to have a computer teacher be one individual that would be impacted, as well as one health teacher to be impacted.
Yeah, and similarly, at Dudley Middle School, with a, with a health and physical education department, you know, matching Charlton Middle Schools with 4.0 FTE, we reduced one health educator. So we could have three educators in each building maintain health and wellness interactions and experiences for the students. The consideration of music wasn't a direct part of our conversation, it was certainly a part of that reduction piece. Ultimately, you know, we landed on the health positions, because we are looking at wholesale change potentially when we sit down and talk about our co-curricular programs with stipends being potentially eliminated, which could detract from the opportunities to experience, you know, additional music experiences, which we hold very near and dear as co-curricular experiences for students. Potential reductions in middle-level athletics, how can we maintain as much continuity with, in my opinion, needs for the young adolescents? And that, that drove the direction of not a reduction in the music area. The proposed action tonight would take a health position back, which would put .5 FTE back into each middle school, which would give 3.5 FTEs in the health and wellness area, phys ed and, and health instruction, and it would put 1.5 FTEs for music instruction at each building, which would allow continuity in programming, albeit limited access.
It would also create parity between both middle schools when we're looking at programming. And what I mean by that is when we're looking at program offerings this way here, at Charlton Middle School, we have 602 students presently right now, and I believe Dudley Middle School has about 540-ish, give or take, so we don't have a huge population disparity. But the offerings would almost be in line to be 100% with parity if we did go with that route. We did bring that up at administrative council. Superintendent Lamarche, he did ask us if we had any other possible ideas, and we did speak to that, and we did make it clear that we have thought about what that would look like from a global lens on both schools. So again, if, if we're looking for equity, and we're looking for opportunity and experience for kids, it's, it's definitely an area we could explore. But I'd, I'd caution everybody here, because we're running into a scheduling nightmare. As we continue to cut personnel, we're going to have schedules that will be open, we're going to have, I don't care if you're John Dewey, you're not going to figure out how to fill these schedules, and it's going to be a nightmare for anybody who sits in these positions. So, yeah, we can keep cutting, but it's going to be tough across the board.
The, the technical challenge with, technically, scheduling is challenging. The technical challenge with itinerant staff across districts in two separate middle schools does require, you know, some significant, and I'm up for the game, but planning, and, you know, while the class size or the population size disparity between Dudley Middle and Charlton Middle is not as large as it has been, my concerns would be that, that 60-student variance with itinerant staff, how can we develop a schedule that doesn't have sections of 30 to 35 in the unified arts classes? I, I think we would have some outlier sections because of the lack of direct availability in programming. And for me, that's a, it, it seems to be a barrier. It's not unhurdleable, if that's a word, but I think that it is something to consider, and that was one of the reasons why this was not a proposed idea.
Do any of us have questions? I have a question for you. As far as the health curriculum, if you were to take a health teacher out of each, if we had to unfortunately take one out of each school, how does that impact the health curriculum being taught? Is it something that you could have your phys ed teachers do a little bit of, or how would you, what would you do with that?
There are a number of sections that each teacher has to teach to get a full schedule, a full teaching load per the contract. Could we utilize PE teachers to be able to teach some health sections? Of course, we could look at that and see what that would look like. It wouldn't be a perfect fit. If there's one health teacher at both schools, we would have to come up with a common theme, and that would probably be focusing on seventh and eighth grade as a continuum to the high school element of the health program that they have. But again, if we had a .5 that we shared, we could also be looking at sixth grade getting part of that health curriculum as well. But with that, with that being said, you're also looking at a reduction in sections from the music side. So it's, it becomes a very complicated puzzle. Not that it can't be done, it just will never be a perfect fit in any capacity, based on where we are fiscally right now.
But to the, to the point of, you know, the health standards being integrated into the physical education curriculum, approaching that as a wellness model, where there can be presented lessons, wellness journaling, consult, utilization of the school adjustment counselor to go in, be able to interact with fifth and sixth grade students around, you know, the social-emotional connectivity, the relationship building, the social skills, conversations that are had in the health curriculum in fifth and sixth grade. It is possible, we haven't done all of that work, but in looking at those standards, having had experience in a prior district that had this situation with health and with physical education, it was at the seventh and eighth grade level in the example I have here, it was possible to integrate those health and wellness standards in when we had that type of reduction scenario.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I, I, it wasn't understated, but I just want to continue to reinforce, sharing employees between the two middle schools is nearly impossible for core teachers. Specialized programs, like students with special needs maybe, that's even very difficult. Sharing a librarian, that was, that was a straight day, day-by-day sharing, but to try to share positions is a very difficult thing, because again, you're talking about one school that's running a program for 500 students and another school running a program for 600 students. It's, 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 to me, it's, it's a very difficult, it wasn't understated by them, but I want to reinforce that, that's, that's very difficult to try to maneuver.
Next, go ahead.
I have a comment. I, first off, want to say that my, my children, both through middle school, were in band. I keep referring this back to my kids, because that's my reference point and why I'm here. My son played, was in jazz band, and it was a much smaller jazz band at the time. And at the time, in fifth grade, he started, and he was the only trombone player, because he had really long arms. But I understand what that gives to students, as, as well as show choir. I keep hearing, and I understand that a lot of this happens during the school day, and it impacts, you know, class and, and planning, but I keep hearing equity being brought up against students. There's no equity to any middle school sports students. The young student that had his cap on, who looked like he probably came from baseball or something, came, he's playing in the band. None of this is appropriate. I really hope the vote, the Dudley voters show up on the 12th, and so that is a moot point. But we foster these things in our students in the elementary and the middle school, and right now, we're talking about middle school, but the middle school, and we're trying to draw students to our high school. And if you go to the Shepherd Hill page, and there's a video, and it says, "Why choose Shepherd Hill?", and the majority of what you see on that is, are the sports and music programs. And we won't have a sports program, let's face it, and I hope we can maintain a music program. And all I am is, I'm calling out to the Dudley voters tonight to please, please, for your town and your community and your school district, please vote in a favorable way. This is not going to do well for anybody in the future, starting this fall. That's all I have to say.
So let's, no, 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 it's okay. So let's get back to the motion on the table. Does anyone have anything further on the motion? Yes?
So I just want to point out a few things. So in order to keep half-day kindergarten, it seems like Dudley Middle School, Shepherd Hill, and the district office were the three that took the hit to keep them. So in order to approve this recommendation, we would then take away even more from the middle school in Dudley, ultimately, because if we, if we have four health teachers at Dudley Middle, and we're going down to three and possibly 3.5, and only 1.5 for a music teacher, I feel like we're adding a half of an NFT for health when we don't necessarily need it as much as we need music. But the other point is, and as a reminder, this budget is a level-funded budget, so I realize that Dudley is the problem right now. However, if this were the budget to pass, there's original agreement, and Dudley Middle is losing a lot more money and possibly even more in this entire budget. So I have to stand up for Dudley right now and say, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I just don't think it fits Dudley's needs and wants right now. With that being said, there's been discussion about regionalizing earlier, and those type of conversations would only ease this in sharing, because it is hard to staff two buildings with one person in sharing that FTE. So again, that's a future conversation, but I just want to bring it to the table, because I've heard so much about deregionalizing, and yet, we're trying to share costs to make the budget work, but yet, all these other conversations are going on. So I just want to point that out. And I forgot my other points, but they'll come back to me at some point, I'm sure.
Maybe I'm reading this a little bit differently, but I don't see Dudley really getting more of a hit. I mean, granted, I do believe a custodian is very much worth it and very needed, but that looks to me like the one add-on. Then the other add-on was the half, half of a resource officer. It looks to me like the major hit, yet again, has been the district office. You know, and, and I know, and, but if you're going by the item, and then, I know people talk about, well, maybe if we regionalized more within, and we had one middle school, okay? But again, we do regionalize in other grades, so yes, it's typically the gen ed population that doesn't get that, and they only get it when they get to Shepherd Hill, but special education in this district is very regionalized to save money and to pool our resources. So again, I'd like us to remember that 20% of the students here are special education.
Clarity, I just want to point out that I was looking at the total amount of 341,000 versus 292, just for clarity. I'm looking at a number, that's all. And when we look at our budget, Dudley gets, because I did this out months ago, out of the middle school budget, Dudley gets 45%, 45.8, and Charlton Middle gets 54.1. So they pay more, but they get more. And therefore, when I look at 341 versus 292, that is more in a smaller population. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, so getting back to the question at hand, and your recommendation to the superintendent and administration would be, if we need to go with the level-funded budget, you would like...
if we need to go with the level funded budget, you would like to have them, do you want to restate what you want them to do?
Yes, go ahead. Want to restate the motion? The motion, the motion was to recommend to administration to not fill the current opening for music position in Charlton Middle School and split a health teacher and music department between the two middle schools. Middle school music department between two middle schools.
So that would, would that also not decrease one of the health teachers? Is that what?
It restores a health teacher, yeah.
It restores a health teacher.
It swaps out the health teacher.
At the age where kids need a health teacher, and as we've heard about the one that is potentially going to be let go, is very relatable to our students. Not to say all teachers aren't relatable to our students, but a lot of times served. And I mean, it's the only teacher that comes up in conversation over our dinner table pretty frequently with my teenage boys who remember some of the lessons learned in that class. So I feel like as an adolescent, these kids could use a little guidance in the right direction. Not to say, again, I'm not trying to downplay anybody or anything else, but adolescents are crucial age. We all can remember when we were, when we were kids. It feels like it wasn't too, too long ago, but now they're at it and they're making some decisions and they need some guidance. And I think that health is kind of a crucial component to their education and they will be. Okay. Are you good with that? Steve? Oh, yes, Jean, go.
So I have one more, one more comment on this. And if I'm incorrect, I'd like a principal to let me know, okay? So this conversation has been going on for a very long time. And I'm not in Dudley Middle. And even though it might look like I'm in Charlton Middle a lot for my kids, I'm really not, you know? And I would look to the administration, being the experts of the building, the teachers being the experts in what the students are learning, the health and the school adjustment counselors being able to take a beat on what the mental health capacity is in the school. And that they were tasked to come up with these cuts. And I feel at this point where we're micromanaging down to one line is just a disservice to all the conversations that have already happened. And even looking at this, yeah, you know, it's a, it is one health teacher. Do I think that health teacher should be cut? No, but I don't think the art teacher should either. I went to art college, okay? But we have to have really difficult conversations. We have to come to some form of a consensus so people understand what we mean when we're saying this is what the level funded budget will look like. But I also noticed Dudley Middle and Charlton Middle didn't put a single school adjustment counselor here. So I think that they recognize that people are having difficulty and they're maintaining certain areas where they feel it has the most need. So yes, if I'm wrong, let me know.
The other point I wanted to make, and this is a reminder for myself, but everyone here, is that there's many friends of my own that are part of these cuts that I would love to save. But when I come to this table, I can't be their friend. I need to be a school committee member and I need to look at this from a broader range. So I'm not standing here trying to defend what I'm defending based on that teacher or anyone in particular. My own, my own children's teachers are on these cuts, which I have, I've cried about many times and I've gone to the school and cried with the teacher. But I, I can't let that decide for me how I feel certain things should be cut. So I know it's difficult, but that was why we were elected, is to look at this from a school committee perspective and not a personal perspective. And when we leave, we can. And again, that goes to the point that no one wants to make these tough decisions, but I don't want anyone to feel like I'm moving line items out of a personal like or hate. So I just want that to be clear.
That would be what I was trying to do, but that's not. I just think that health is crucial and I find it comical that that's the one thing that my kids really do talk about. But no, I completely understand. And I have many, many friends in the district that I don't want to see lose their jobs. I don't want to see any of this happen. So I apologize if it came off that way. But yes, clearly, all these cuts are terrible. None of these things should be happening right now. And year after year after year, we keep cutting and losing people and great people. And yeah, it's, it's unfortunate. I was just trying to think, you know, we were talking equity and I didn't see any, any cuts to the music. I just, not that I want any cuts to the music either, but I just didn't know if that was a possibility. Again, just putting it out on the table for, for conversation.
And that has always been my goal. I never wanted to see cuts in 36 years. And I know how you feel when you have friends that are being cut and you can't do anything about it. But I hope they do pass the override so everyone will have their positions because it's very sad to see cuts in our school system. We need everyone right now.
Say what you were saying on that, though. That music teacher, that position, might be what we end up talking about a couple of months from now on the 400,000.
Yeah, I agree. Like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not filled, it's a temporary position. It was just a kind of a thought that I figured would be worth mentioning. Just again, for a little equity and for the kids' sake. Thank you for bringing it up at the committee because I think the more we have these conversations, you know, I, I think, Jean, I didn't, I think it was a really good catch that you didn't, you didn't cut anybody from the adjustment counselor's side. And, and having, hearing what you're saying about what you intend to do with, with this plan, it makes sense and I appreciate that.
It's just another perspective.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's worth talking about.
Okay, we do still have a motion on the table, so why don't we go to a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion fails. Okay, moving, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Yes. Do we have anything else further to discuss? Yes, go ahead.
This one pager of informational only, I don't know if everyone in the audience has it? No? I think it would just. Okay, so I apologize, audience. But what I'm looking at this, if you go grade by grade, school by school, some of them, if we decreased a teacher in certain grades, and I'll put it out there again, the caveat is nobody wants anything to happen to anybody, but clearly, that's where we are, we're at. So I'm just going to skip over reinstating that many, many times. But looking at this, for example, Charlton third grade is currently seven sections. If we reduce to six sections, the class size would increase by 2.87. And basically, all that is, is taking the 25.17 projected class size for next school year to the current class size of 22.3. Again, that's under three students to be put into the six other classes extra. I focused on each grade that has under a three-student increase. So in addition to Charlton third grade, that would be Charlton sixth grade and Charlton eighth grade, all under increase of three kids per class. And then on the Dudley side, there's only two that fall under the, under the three-plus students. And that would be Dudley fourth grade at 2.25 and Dudley fifth grade at 2.0. Again, informational only, I understand. But looking at this, five full-time teachers, again, cutting teachers versus cutting health, foreign language, art, et cetera. Nothing is great, but cutting five full teachers versus actual departments such as foreign language, athletics, et cetera, those five teachers, I believe, it may not be easy, but they can go and find a position elsewhere versus the 500 or something athletes won't be participating in sports next year versus five teachers looking for a job elsewhere. And over, I think, 100 or 200 between the two schools for the foreign language, if not more. And just, just again, informational, throwing out an idea. You know, class size of going from 20, 25 to 27 doesn't seem, again, I'm sure, I'm not a teacher. My, all of my family is, but two kids in a, in a fourth grade class extra versus cutting all of these other non-daily school activities, I think is, is worth discussing.
Does anybody have a comment about that? Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Enberg, could you repeat the Charlton? It was grade three, grade six, and what was he, third grade?
Charlton was three, six, and eight.
Thank you.
And again, all were under the plus three students per class.
I'll, I'll start. So I would just say, I have never taught in elementary school. I taught high school. And, and I'm sure Mrs. Okoye would say, the smaller your class, the more they learn. The more you know your students. And if we sit here and talk about the social emotional needs of our students and the importance of making sure that they get what they need emotionally, academically, all around, I can't picture my child, you know, they're sitting in a class right now, a third grader sitting in a class with a 21 to 22 average, going in, a teacher having to teach 28.
I didn't choose that line item.
No, but I'm just looking at the Dudley side and I'm looking at 28 students in a class. And that, that, I don't know that you're going to keep your staff. And like, I don't know that we want to, you'll even be able to retain the staff you have, thinking about how overworked they'd be and how underserved our children would be. And I, and I don't mean to be at you on that, I just, that's how I feel as an educator. I, yeah, we could look at little lines that are one or two, but it's scary.
Yes, don't go for it.
On the flip side, though, again, you, the words were social and well-being.
Right.
Health, school athletics, art, music, all of those are huge contributors to the social and well-being of all the kids.
Yep.
So it's, we can all, we can all be half here and half here for, for which position needs to go, but they're all going to impact hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of children, wherever it comes from.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, as I.
As I look at this, I can't help but notice the, the big numbers. And I've always said, I've always, you know, thought about increasing class sizes to save some things. But again, I, I feel as though there needs to be priority, the younger the child is. So especially K through four, I wouldn't want to see anything over 22 to 25 the most.
That's why I skipped over K and J.
But, you know, I've sat down with Principal Elwell and talked about class size. He has creative solutions at the high school. Because I've mentioned that I can't vote on increasing class size at this level, up to 25, 27, as we've said, with Shepherd Hill classes, some, some of them being less than two hands. So I know it's different because there's so many different choices at Shepherd Hill, but I just wanted to put that out there, that this chart only has K through eight, but we do have to include the high school if we're thinking about class size. I went from high school of, some of my classes were over 30, then to college with a lecture hall full of students. And I, when I went from elementary school to high school, I went from a very small class of 12 students to, again, over 30. It was a culture shock. So if we constantly have smaller class sizes at the high school, it's going to be a culture shock going to, and I went to a small college, never mind these big universities. So I can't stress enough the, the importance of K through eight remaining smaller, but especially K through four, because I think it's very important. And a lot of these kids coming in, the kindergarten class coming in was probably a year old when COVID happened. They didn't have daycare, they didn't have preschool, they didn't have EI. And if they did, it was no socialization, which is the basic foundation of all of those. So to have basically nothing coming into kindergarten, we're going to only be getting more and more needs over the next couple of years with the pandemic behind us. So that's my uncle. I, I, I appreciate your point about saving certain things because, you know, the teachers could find other jobs. Again, we don't want anyone to have to, but saving all of these other items, which are just as important to these children, you know, middle school athletics, those kids were, were at the age where you put them in any activity to expose them, gymnastics, swim, all this stuff. Those kids weren't. Now they're going into middle school and they're not going to have the opportunity to have, be on a sports team in the school. Even our high school, JV and freshman teams, they were in middle school. Middle school sports didn't happen during COVID. So now they're going to have another opportunity taken away from them as they enter high school. So all these same kids keep being affected. It's just, it's tough. But my point being is the lower the, the grade level, the smaller their class size should be.
Yes?
Caitlin, okay, for the most part, I concur with you, okay? All right. But I would also say that I don't agree with increased class sizes. You know, again, COVID, we already have record learning loss. We haven't made it through. We're going to, we all know this is the last year of ESAR. It's, you know, they're not there yet. They're not ready, they're not at pre-COVID numbers. They're not, they just need more support. And having more support is having a smaller class size. And again, academics mean a lot. Yes, sports, music, all of it, of course it does. But when it comes down to it, we're here to educate the kids. And if you're going to tear it down to requirement and to bare basics of what we have to do for a level funded budget, it would have to really be more to education. And this is coming from somebody who's, I have so many kids and so many different things. I mean, it's not on here, but if JV and freshmen's gone, I'm pretty sure Unified Sports isn't really hanging in there on level funded.
Anyone else have any comment? Okay. So we will move to, oh, do you have anything else discussional?
Again, as I started off, there, there is no best, worst decision. There isn't. Every one of these has an impact and every one of these will impact the student experience. And no matter how you try to, 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 to move, you know, a level funded budget to the forefront, it is, it's virtually impossible. We, again, you're, you are, we are a district that doesn't have fluff, that doesn't have excess. As I've, as I've shared with you as a committee and I've shared with the community, you know, anything extra we get is typically through a grant. It is not through the operating budget expenses from the two communities. It's not through the assessments. And then our fixed, our fixed costs increasing by $3.6 million this year has put us squarely in this place. And it's, there is no easy path out of this other than obtaining a level services budget in support from the electorate in the town of Dudley. There really isn't.
Okay, so let's move on to, yes, sorry. Okay, I don't know who raised their hand first.
I thought she was pointing to me, I'm sorry. I don't know if this needs to be on a future agenda, but is there any way we can discuss fees for sports and music and how that might offset some of the costs to save them tonight or at a future meeting?
What if we did that at the June 14th meeting?
Motion to discuss now, because that was actually my next question.
I think, okay, hold on. You don't need a motion to discuss, so wait.
Well, you said, you suggested wait until June fourteenth, I'm saying I don't want to wait because what Caitlin just raised was what I was gonna raise.
Right, but we don't have fees as part of something on our agenda.
That's why I wanted to ask if we had to.
So, yeah, I mean, we can have a discussion on fees, it would be on the next, we could put it on our next agenda if needed. Um, if you feel that we need a discussion about fee-based, anything fee-based before the vote, we could do that, you know, we talked about having a meeting before the vote, so...
I don't, sorry, I don't know if it matters, but it has, it came up at the last meeting, I think it might have been an audience member, so I don't know if that changes being able to discuss it now.
No, I think the chair has the right to tell us, uh, that you're saying you want it on the next agenda.
On the next agenda.
We didn't have it on this agenda, so there's a lot to talking about fees.
Correct.
And it should be on the agenda, and it isn't this evening.
Okay. Do you, and my question to you is, do you want, would you like it on the agenda? Do you need, do we need to have a meeting before the election?
Well, I just don't know if administration would want us to have that discussion, because it might change some of this, too. So, that was kinda my question.
I don't think it would change job, do you have a thought on that?
Change?
I don't think it would change job positions.
No, first of all, we don't have a presentation on fees this evening.
No, I know.
So, we would need to bring that forward. Uh, second, we're talking about a presentation on fees to offset, not positions, we're talking about student activities.
Right, right.
So, I don't, that wouldn't change.
It wouldn't change the budget.
Well.
It could.
It could, but a- again, there's still, unemployment is still in play, but it could.
Right.
It could add something back, yes.
So, you would like to have it before the, before the meeting on Ju- before the Dudley votes, is that what you would like?
I just, I don't think we're able to raise enough fees, money in fees, to meet a hundred thousand dollars, so that's why I'm like, thinking if we had the discussion, we might be able to bring that number down, but it would still have to be restored, is my point.
Yes, I think we will need a lot more information as far as numbers and. I think so. Um, you know, to really know what we're looking at pre-form, but I can't imagine we would need to do that before the vote. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not thinking that we would, but I do think. We potentially have the opportunity even, well, correct me if I'm wrong, after the vote, should it not pass, to come back to the table and discuss more options. Yes, we definitely do. And the possibility of us needing to cut more for, um, retirement and what, for additional funds, so this isn't the be-all, end-all by any means, right? And I do think we need a conversation about fees, definitely.
Okay, definitely. Fine, that's fine.
Okay. Is that good? Okay. Um, so why don't we move to the update on professional development? Mr. Math- Dr. Ackman?
Thank you.
Mr. Matthew, I'm sorry, Mr. Matthew.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Matthew.
So, previous to the discussion of the fees, there was a, the discussion on class size, is there some guidance that school committee might wanna give administration about numbers so that we can put that into the mix as well? Not to exceed twenty-four, not to exceed twenty-six, not to exceed twenty-eight, or is it, or do we not wanna do that yet?
If we wanna have a class-size conversation, and we're gonna start changing anything before this Dudley budget override, like, before the override vote, then we need to have that conversation before the, before the override vote, if you're gonna start raising class sizes. So, if that's a conversation we wanna have, because I think that does impact, it would impact people's vote, it could. Is that a conversation you want before?
I thought we had kinda briefly mentioned it prior, and got the impression that it wasn't going to change it significantly, and I, I personally don't want to see higher classes. I think, what are we at right now, twenty-two, twenty-three?
The goal's twenty-two.
The goal is twenty-two, so if that one or two isn't gonna make too much of a difference, then it's probably not worth discussing, I don't know how many people are open to having, you know, three, four, five, six, seven more kids per class, I don't.
I think we have to.
Where it would make a difference, but that's just.
I think we have to realize that if the vote doesn't pass, and we're at the point where we now have significantly more, more money that we have to cut out of the budget, that, that is gonna be in play.
Okay, that's fair enough, I just, you know, again, we could start doing some of that work, or we can, you know, wait, just bring it up, that's all.
Right.
I'd also be afraid that if it doesn't pass, our numbers may go down just because people may be looking elsewhere.
That could be.
So, that may be a new point, I don't know.
Okay. Could be. All right, are we ready to move on to Dr. Ackman? Go ahead, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, May twenty-sixth, all Dudley Charlton Regional School District staff members will have an afternoon of professional development. This PD afternoon will be done at the building level, with certain staff members collaborating across buildings to support the transition process between grades one and two, four and five, and eight and nine. At the elementary level, classroom teachers and paraprofessionals will meet to work on student placement decisions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Specialist teachers will collaborate to work on the report card indicators, and special education, counseling, and support staff will meet with staff from receiving schools to support the student transition process and to share important information. At the middle level, science teachers in grades six through eight will meet to design a plan for implementation of Open Sai Ed next fall. Math teachers will meet to review a scope and a sequence for math next fall, as well as to discuss placement from grade six to seven and seven to eight. Teachers in grade five will review the student's placement process and optimal student groupings for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. The student support team and paraprofessionals will work from, on transitions from either the elementary to middle or middle to high school level. Uh, paraprofessionals will either receive safety care training or work with other team members to discuss the transition process for students. Middle school Unified Art teachers will collaborate across the middle schools to review the year and to plan innovative activities supporting UDL components and discuss any related curriculum shifts. At Shepherd Hill Regional High School, staff will spend the afternoon by meeting by department. This work will focus around department-specific curricular and instructional practices. In addition, teams will meet to review any needed adjustment in these areas. Certain departments will review MCAS data from ninth and tenth grade students to form instructional focus areas for twenty-three and twenty-four. Departments will also review the impact of UDL on lesson design, celebrating areas of success and identifying targeted areas for growth. Additionally, there will be vertical coordination. Special educators and guidance counselors will meet with their eighth-grade colleagues to support the information sharing and placement process for incoming ninth-grade students. We look forward to an active collaborative professional, learning of professional development this Friday. On a related note, the final meeting of the DCRSD Professional Development, uh, Committee will take place on June seventh. At this meeting, the team will review staff feedback from previous surveys and collaborate around the successes of this year, as well as identifying areas for future growth and focus. Our group's work will develop focus areas for all staff professional development for twenty-three, twenty-four. As always, this process values feedback from each and every staff member as a way to build professional development offerings to support the ongoing growth for each and every staff member. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You just reminded me that I have my children coming home halfway through the day. Okay. Um, so let's move on, does anyone have any questions?
What time is that meeting, on the seventh and?
It's a Google Meet.
Okay.
Uh, three-thirty.
Would you be willing, am I, could I be a part of that meeting?
I can send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great, we'll move on to E, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, Board of Directors.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, the, for the first time since I've been here in Dudley Charlton, we were requested from MARS to have, uh, the school committee take a vote on a new article or an article, Article Six, Board of Directors, um, I could read it if, if the, if the school committee so desires, and Article Nine, Meetings of the Association, and then also a vote on the, uh, proposed, uh, Board of Directors for MARS. Again, this is the first time that I've been requested to bring it to you as a committee, uh, for your action, how would, how would you like me to proceed?
Does anyone need, anyone need it to be read? Maybe just summarize?
Uh, the Board of Directors, it, what it does is it lists out the fifteen voting members, who is, who are the liaisons, um, the eleven elected directors, at least two shall be members of the regional district school committees, at least two shall be superintendents of schools, it just lists out the, what the membership looks like, and that there are liaisons from MASC, MASs, MASBO, um, and MAVA. And then Article Nine is Meetings of the Association, a quorum that has to be at least fifteen voting members, excuse me, at, at least fifteen voting members of the districts of the association shall constitute a quorum, um, and then it goes on to talk about voting, each regional school district that has elected to affiliate with the association as outlined in Article Nine herein, shall designate a member who will vote on behalf of its district. The designation of the voting member of each regional school district affiliated with the association shall conform with the following conditions, the voting member may be a school committee member, superintendent, assistant superintendent, or school business official, and it does not list out the, uh, conforming, uh, conditions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? As written? So, move. Second? Kelly's second. Okay, uh, is there any discussion? No. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? And we are unanimous, yep. Great. Okay, um, and then we'll, we said that we would put some public comment at the end, so if there's anyone that would like, uh, comment? Ms. Terry? Just a reminder, you wanna say your name and where you reside.
Thank you, Jamie Terry, the town of Charlton. Do you need to know my street address? I don't remember that.
No, you don't.
Okay. Um, a, a point of clarity, on page five of this packet, um, this through the slides, Mason Road Elementary has, um, kindergarten, uh, teacher crossed out as a cut, um, but Charlton Elementary School does not, are they both supposed to be crossed out so that we're able to, um, secure both of those positions for Charlton, I mean, for kindergarten teachers?
She's saying like, on this one, this is crossed out, but this isn't, and neither of these.
Oh, I'm not sure why it, it's, uh, as you can see in my presentation, it is crossed out.
Ah, okay.
So, I'm not sure how it trans- transferred like that.
It didn't transfer on this.
It obviously didn't transfer, but on the presentation, they are crossed out.
Do you mind just flipping the next one, so, okay, so are they both supposed to be crossed out, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and then I just wanted to make, make, um, reference to the fact that, um, I agreed with Kelly Zella's motion, um, earlier today regarding the health department, um, and then I, I just wanna say, I know it failed, I know you talked about it for a long time, so I won't spend a ton of time on it, the only new information I will, maybe not new, but the only points I will bring is that, um, I think that what was proposed was equitable, but since that didn't seem to work for everybody at the table, I, I would strongly say, we have an opening in music right now, and we should not re- be filling that opening in music in Charlton, and then you should keep the health teacher in Charlton, and so make that switch. If you don't wanna make it equitable, which is what I think was being proposed, so that both Dudley and Charlton would go down to a one-point-five for music and a one-point-five for, um, maybe I'm wrong on one-point-five for health, but both of them would stay equitable. If you don't want to, you should take music off the table and pu- and keep that health department, um, sorry, that means, put music on the table because it's an opening, and, and not, and take the health department off. And I wanna say, hearing what the principals came up and said, I, I appreciate your point, Ms. Carcello, that they are the experts, that this is their schools, that they live and breathe by this, but hearing that fifth and sixth grade would lose the opportunities for health that they currently have seems really difficult for me to hear, given the fact that our children are making decisions about their health right now, um, before they are even educated, if we do this, as to what the impacts to vaping are. We know that the, the, the bathrooms have to be closed in some of these areas because of the impacts that children need this education, and we can't take away their ability to learn it in fifth and sixth grade. I, I feel very strongly that health should not be on this list, and, um, thank you for letting me come up here today.
Can I ask you, did you say that we have bathrooms being closed due to vaping?
Well, I'm not, I'm not the one closing them, so I, you shouldn't ask me, probably.
Is that what you're hearing?
Yes.
I, I just wanna make sure that the principals are allowed to speak to that.
They have other areas that they can go to the bathroom, but they need to go down to the office for seventh and eighth grade, if the choices that they're making in the bathrooms up in the seventh and eighth grade wings are poor, and so they need to come down to the office where they're, where they're, uh, where it's a more monitored scenario. And so I'm saying, these students need education so that they don't make poor decisions that will impact their health for, for years to come.
Okay, so that's not all students, it's students that may have been caught, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying those bathrooms are not accessible at times because of the choices that are being made, and there's not enough staff to monitor those bathrooms.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do, is that accurate? Would you like to speak on?
And through the chair, I can tell you, we have situations where it takes place in school, and we deal with the situation as it happens. Some students, um, asked to use a different, uh, bathroom as a result of assistive behavior, and part of a plan we put together, but at the end of the day, um, you know, we have some health issues or mental health issues with kids that are, that are, you don't have attention, it must have come down there, so.
Okay.
But, closing on the bathrooms, no, they're not, they're not closing them, you're able to, if you have to, you can enjoy that as it, as it happens.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, do we have anybody else that would like to speak on public comment? Sure, come on in.
Hello again, everyone, uh, my name's Robin Watson, I live in Dudley, I spoke extensively at the meeting on Monday, and I neglected to get to the part about my suggested opportunities. If you wind up being level-funded, that you could make certain cuts without impacting a single teacher, and, but my, first I have a question, can someone explain what a stipend is?
I think that's a.
Give me some examples of who gets paid a stipend.
Madam, Madam Chair, through the chair, um, stipends are for things above and beyond your contractual workday, so for example, if you were a coach, you get a stipend, if you run a student activity group or a club, you get a stipend, um, i- and there are certain positions within the, uh, contractual workday that is above and beyond, uh, that day that you receive a stipend for as well.
Somebody didn't talk about that.
You have a, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency in your budget, I manage budgets where I work, I'm familiar with contingency planning, but that's an opportunity right there to say, okay, we're not spending that two-hundred thousand, and the other thing is, I work in high-tech, we replace hardware and software on a, a regular schedule where I work, and your technology spend at each school, um, is over ninety thousand dollars in your budget, if you deferred just ten percent of that per school for one year, you would save sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four, so that combined with your contingency, you would save two-hundred-sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four without eliminating a single teacher, a single stipend, any after-school program, any sport, it's just something to consider, and I know you don't need to take what I'm saying, but that's just, um, something I wanted to get out there, and also, I have a music background, I used to teach music, and students who are in music learn so much more than what the, the students tonight articulated about friendship and group and everything. There's a little thing on my, um, college alumni site that says, all the skills someone gets out of the arts and music, and I don't have it memorized, but listening, analytical, discipline, ability to learn a foreign language faster because you're reading musical notation, creativity, of course, performance, confidence, those students tend to be very strong in math because they're looking at rhythms and, you know, paying attention, um, music history, collaboration, following direction of their teachers, and general camaraderie, which is something the students mentioned, they didn't use that word, but lifelong friendships in it. So, I'm a big proponent of music in the schools, and I, as a former teacher, educated as an instrumental music teacher, but I have touched. And I, as a former teacher, educated as an instrumental music teacher, but I have taught general. I can tell you that generally speaking, the teachers that are good in band are not necessarily great in choral. And I, I don't know of any choral teacher in my background, and I went to a top music school, that can teach an instrument. So, I recommend you don't cut, you know, both music and band at one school, don't try to combine those two. And I also know that at health, I agree with this lady over in the corner. Kelly, I, I don't know your last name.
Zella.
Zella. Um, middle school is a very impressionable age, when students are going through a lot of tough adolescent experiences. And I think health is extremely important at that age, as well as in high school, to make smart decisions that will impact their life. So I support you in all of that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Watson, I would just recommend, if, I appreciate the fact that you have suggested some budget cuts, and I think if you want to come and meet with the superintendent or the finance director, just to have a conversation so that you can understand too, how it all flows. I think that would really be helpful, because I think we may have a two-hundred-thousand contingency budget, but I'm sure that they have, you know, where that's going, and, and it has to be earmarked for certain things. So I thank you for trying to educate yourself, and I, if you'd like some more, please call and make an appointment.
And you're all welcome to reach out to me, I know someone here has. Uh, I said happy to meet, never heard it from them again.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Matthew?
Uh, can I address the contingency?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you. So of that two-hundred-thousand, a hundred thousand is actually for, uh, paraprofessional stipends. Uh, there are stipends that we have in contract, in, relatively new, uh, for paras that work, uh, with, um, individual students, as well as for, um, providing ABA service.
RBT certification.
I'm sorry, RBT certification and using it. Um, so that money gets distributed to salary lines as needed. Um, and the other hundred thousand is simply an offset to the one-point-one million dollars of excess and deficiency funds that we use. It's a guaranteed hundred thousand to go back. Or, as was the case a couple of years ago, eighty thousand went to the Dudley Middle School, uh, chiller, because that came out of the blue, um, back in two thousand nineteen, I think it was. You know, so, so it is purposely built into the budget, it's there to return back to E and D, um, or for unexpected large expenses.
Can I ask too, and you may not have this off the top of your head, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. Do you happen to know how many, I think over this past year, we've had to increase our staff, especially in, in our special ed area, by a certain amount, due to people that move in at last minute? I think that also impacts that type of spending.
Absolutely, you know, if not, if not every dollar is used for those stipends, um, then there's a little bit of money to help support, um, any new positions that develop, um, are required during the course of the year.
Okay. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak for public comment? Yes, please, come on.
Hi, everyone, um, I'm Janet Duchaine, I'm a Dudley resident. Um, I'm a proud product of the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. Um, I was Janet Darren when I was at the school. Um, as a member of the class of two thousand and five, I was part of both the last seventh grade class at Shepherd Hill, and the first eighth grade class at Dudley Middle School. I've been a part of the Shepherd Hill Music Department as a coach in some capacity or another since I graduated. I owe the teachers and the program an awful lot, especially for the work ethic that served me in my professional life. Saying all that, you might think that I'm going to use my tight three of public comment to advocate for school activities, um, both arts and athletics, and believe me, I'm a staunch supporter of extracurricular activities. Especially since I know that my experience in this district is not unique. So many DCRSD alumni credit after-school programs to their success, whether it's from athletics, music, drama, or academic clubs. However, tonight, I want to urge the committee and the administration, despite the fact that you've been working so hard to try to keep the ship afloat, um, to look beyond the current financial crisis to the next one, and unfortunately, the one after that. And to commit to problem-solving in a way that will allow the district to save more than just the fun programs or positions. This isn't the first time a high school librarian, or the middle school foreign language programs have been on the chopping block, and unfortunately, it won't be the last. If the proposed cuts in face of this current budget shortfall are as unacceptable as was communicated during the last six school committee meetings, some kind of radical lasting change that will allow the district to prioritize educators, support personnel, and students need to be considered. With the increased costs of just providing building maintenance and utilities for seven locations, it's no wonder that we keep having to cut classes, cut activities, cut teachers and administrators. The district as a whole could seriously benefit from regionalizing the middle schools into one location, and I know it's been mentioned tonight. I also know that it's really lofty. I know that it's going to require a boatload of work, and it can't be done in the three-ish months between academic years. But that's part of the reason that I'm bringing it up now. In two thousand and eleven, just, as an aside, in two thousand and eleven, I was at a retreat for choir directors and choreographers, and the vast majority were educators in public districts. And a lot of what we discussed was based on budget shortfalls, and programs that were being cut, things like that. The facilitator in this retreat asked who is harmed by budget cuts. So we all looked at each other, and we were like, the kids, duh. And the facilitator laughed, and told us we were wrong. The educators are harmed by budget cuts first and foremost, because staff, support staff, teachers, and coaches do everything they can to make sure that the kids don't see the impact of massive funding gaps, usually to their own personal detriment. The lack of support, especially financial, is the main reason why so many people get burned out and leave education. There often isn't any public outcry until the kids actually see these impacts, and by then, your talented and most dedicated educators and support staff have already left. Our district, in my opinion, has historically relied on our teachers and administrators to keep providing for students, even when they don't have anything left to give. We see it over and over again by budgeting through attrition. The teachers and students in the district desperately need a longer-term plan, and I know, in the face of the current budget crisis, it's hard to think ahead, it's hard to like, get ahead of the problem. But I just want to ask, please don't wait to start working on the long-term plan, because we're going to desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out, um. Mrs. Duchaine, that I believe the Charlton Board of Selectmen have this on their agenda at the end of June. Just for discussion, for kind of a starting point, I just read today, I think it must be June twentieth, I want to say, or the twenty-seventh? I'd have to confirm, but it is, I know, um, something that they wanted to go, um, forward with, at least the first steps, um, in discussion, so.
Are you talking about?
As far as regionalizing. I, I'm not sure, I think just.
Not regionalizing further.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, de-regionalizing, I guess, is what their thought is, so.
Okay.
But I'm sure that anything, they would be open to suggestions to go the other way as well, but I don't, I don't know that for sure. I just kind of caught that today as, on a posting, so I figured I would share.
Thank you, thank you. Yes.
If I may, uh, just as a reminder for everyone, the first, um, ballot override would have provided future funding for us. Uh, that was our long-term solution, or at least our solution for the next five years. Unfortunately, it was unsuccessful. But that was done in cooperation with the town of Dudley, recognizing that they don't have the resources to provide us with appropriate budget increases as we go forward. And you used the correct term, budgeting through attrition, um, that there is a time and place where there's no more to cut, no more to, um, to reduce.
Okay. All right, is there any more public comment? Nope. Okay, um, I would move to a adjournment. Welcome to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor? Congratulations.